Alright, so we can call the meeting to order at 7:31. Please stand if you would like to be.
We are the United States of America and in the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to State Patrol, candidates and our past board members. Welcome, um, so we just need approval of whether we need some special meeting minutes tomorrow or today. Any discussion? I just noticed on the special meetings, I'm sure it was your first time at that meeting. So we just need to add them.
Was it?
Yes. Um, so just need a motion, any discussion, motion, um, sorry to sort of keep people embarrassed in this last meeting. Sorry, just, what's that? Um, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Alright, we're up to public participation. Anybody has something to say, comments, ideas, please come comment from city name and address.
Good evening, uh, Luluba, 1160 Collins State Road. As a currently sitting town council member, I was just informed this morning of a potential change in a meeting that Superintendent Willett had previously planned on having a budget discussion from November 27th to November 6th. And I'm looking to inquire as far as if this is accurate. If it is accurate, then, uh, then I have some great concerns regarding that because of some of the issues that were going to be discussed at that 27th meeting, where it involves not only the school budget, but also the kind of approval of contracts for teachers that are going to be reviewed. My concern is that with it coming up, being moved from the 27th to the 6th again, if that's accurate, the concerns are is that this seems as a town council member an apparent attempt to circumvent the, uh, the system where you would have a, uh, a town, town council as well as a Board of Education that would now be addressing it after discussing it in the 27th. But by now having the town council having their last meeting just last night, and now having this budget meeting moved up from the 27th to the 6th, then now deprives the town council of the ability to address any issues and also would seem to be an apparent attempt to circumvent the circumstance of this situation by having the currently outgoing Board of Education voting on, uh, or looking at and possibly voting on a budget and approving a contract without having the ability for the new incoming, uh, new, uh, the new vote newly voted in Board of Education and Town Council ability to address that before it's approved. So I'm just looking for guidance from, uh, from the Board of Education here and from Superintendent Willett, if that's accurate. And if so, I would, I have great concerns regarding that. It's very disturbing and very disingenuous to have a meeting, uh, meeting like that moved up from a previously scheduled time up three weeks for apparently no reason. This is a contract issue that has been sitting in front of the board for some period of time and no action has been taken on it. There seems to be no apparent reason for it to be moved up in such an emergency manner without, uh, an apparent, apparent attempt to have a favorable board or potentially favorable board vote on an issue while, and basically forcing it upon the new Board of Education and the new Town Councils to address.
If you can address it, if my information, we listen to all members, then we will address it.
Alright, thank you.
It's a good question, thank you.
Please come to 53rd side. I just wanted to thank Jeff and Jane and Rob and, and Sam for, and excuse me, Colleen, sorry, Colleen, for your service. You guys are really, it was wonderful to see you all job together despite the, uh, the differences in Democratic Party or Republican Party. I really appreciate that you all came together for the purpose of education. And I know Jeff's out there, but I'd better want to say thank you. You guys are really, you all brought something special to the team and I very appreciate it. Thank you.
Kenny Schreiber, 53rd, over one. And first of all, all I want to say is thank you to all of you because I know that your job has been very rough for the past two years. And as a resident of the town, I'm appreciative of all the hours and time all of you have spent. I know some of you are retired, Sam, you made management. Jane, you've been great. Colleen. But I will, I again, thank you for your, for everything that you've done. And whether people know it or not, behind the scenes, you folks do a lot. And regardless of what the decisions you make, you put a lot of time into it. On behalf of all of us, I thank you.
Patrick Twilight, we can drive extension. Um, here with many former, uh, members of the, of the Board of Ed to congratulate everyone, uh, on this successful term here, but especially, uh, to deliver, to deliver thanks to some of the few remaining of the cohort that, uh, that have been serving when we were serving and just to really, um, to thank especially Sam, Bob, um, Colleen, uh, Jeff, Michelle, um, and, and Karen for your service, but especially those, those outgoing members. Um, we're really proud of the work that we were able to do in a bipartisan nature, the partnership we were actually able to, um, establish with the Town Council. So, um, for folks watching, if you, if you've never served on the Board of Education, you truly can't, uh, understand the meaning of a thankless job without doing that. So I'd encourage you all to get involved. But I really wanted to express our thanks and my personal thanks for the opportunity to work alongside you and the opportunity to really make sure that we were thinking about what was best for Pollen residents and what's best for Pollen students. So, um, thank you and, um, you know, enjoy the free time that you're getting back. And Bob and, uh, and Colleen, so, um, much appreciated.
Well, thank you too, Patrick, for serving too.
Steve Clark, 29th, Etwood Road. Having sat up there with all of you, or most of you, for 10 years, at least part of the time anyway, and all the time with Bob, I just want to have a little bit of a quote from the Board of Ed. Literature that I've read a lot, it was in school. And that's kind of from Dickens' Tale of Two Cities saying, "It was the best of times, it was the worst of nights." And that was pretty well representative of how things have gone over the years. Uh, it was, sometimes it was fantastic when you saw the, uh, fruition of your efforts and then it's very frustrating at other times. And that's the way the Board of Ed goes. But I appreciate all that you've done, particularly with the people I've worked with for 10 years. And I just like to say for all the people coming in, the new, new board, which will be the majority, that they continue to show a bipartisan support and do what's best for the children in this town. That's really what our purpose is for being here. And as long as we, I think we got, uh, good head start on that, I don't want it to go away. So hopefully it will continue with the new board members and the Pollen education system will continue to be as strong as it has been in the past. Thank you for all your service.
So we can't respond, it's, um...
I mean, um, G6 defines why the change in dates is being put out there. So if you want, you can read to now or to G6. Item G6.
The item on the agenda is...
Covers the reasoning behind the movement of... So are we getting to talk about it in one?
I don't think we're just saying that we're, we're not trying to bulldog anybody or not be transparent. This is just the process and the way it is. The timing of it is not necessarily the way that you choose to have it, but this is...
I mean, very simply, Birch Grove building project needs to have some approvals, so we have to move meetings around a little bit. We'd be bumping, we'd be keeping, trying to set it up so that we have a November 6th meeting and a November 13th meeting rather than one that goes as far out as November 27th. So it's all described in the narrative for item G6, which I think we're going to move up to an earlier part of the agenda anyway. Um, the board membership expires November 13th. There may be action that's needed prior to then. So moving it to November 6th makes sense for that reason. Bumping the Birch Grove, the Birch Grove project may need approval of a site structure and concrete submission plan prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. So moving it away from the 27th and earlier will allow us to approve the SCG 042 form. So these are the reasons why it's listed in, uh, G6.
But it sounds like we'll be current later, Luke. So if you want to stay for that part when we discuss it, or that we'll give more conversation about it.
Yes, thank you, please.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So with that, should I go ahead and make the motion now?
Yes, we have a very complicated motion.
Uh, so I'm going to make the motion to swap items G4 and G5 with items G6 and G7. So that will make G4 the possible date change. G5 will become BOE goal setting session. Or session. And G6 becomes the TEA contract and G7 is the TAS contract. And then part two, I'll just do a part two of the motion so we can be efficient here. Motion to add an executive session to the agenda as a purpose of discussing negotiations, strategies, and contracts.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I...
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Any other questions?
Well, I have points of... I was going to do it on a dear person report that I felt like because it, the agenda got moved around and we have a lot of people here. I wrote, I guess, I want to call it a, if you want a waiting speech or a favoring speech, but it just touches on many things and if you don't mind giving me like two or three minutes to read in it. And I think it will, um, help on if we, we won't have to say anything. If I tear up, I'm sorry because I am very sad. Over the last few months, I've had mixed feelings about tonight. I have given up so much time away from my family to serve those who have elected me to the Board of Ed. I may not have accomplished all the things my kids wanted, like extended summers or no homework. I am excited though for the next chapter of my life. Now I will be able to spend more time with my family, although I am sure I will stay involved in other ways. Five years ago, Sam Altastine reached out to me. Sam let me know there was a Republican seat open. I first thought, I have no experience, but realized, of course I do. I learned to recognize you, Sam, we showed cross-party lines. If it was not for Sam, I would not have been on this journey. Thank you, Sam. After that, I learned the process on how to be appointed. I want to thank the Republican Party for giving me the opportunity and then I've managed to terms. With the overwhelming support from my community and of course my family, I was elected. It was humbling and such an honor to know the community trusted me enough to serve for their children. Over the last five years, there has been many highlights that I have been a part of and of course disappointments and tragedies along the way. When I became chair two years ago, there was doubt by some whether I would advocate for schools or go another way. I knew then this was going to be my first challenge. Who would have known that had doubts? After a rocky start with leadership, Karen and I got into sync with understanding each other's views and we worked through them. This is what leadership does, you work together and compromise. I never thought of us as a chair or vice chair, but actual partners working towards the same goals. These are just titles and nothing more than that. Bunch of highlights we've done over many years. Hiring the superintendent was the biggest highlight. When the meeting was over, Bob Pedoni said to me, "This will be the biggest vote I will have made." Bob, you were right. I want to add, it was the best thing the board did. I hope the community realizes how lucky we are to have them. Dr. Willett, you're an amazing man that is compassionate and has the best interest for every student. Implementing the LEAP program, this is unbelievable. It's not just about the savings, but being able to educate Tom students right in our district, enabling them to be, with their peers and not be an outplace. They added a business academy at the high school. This can pave the way for students that want to pursue Victorian business or in finance. Another reason this offer may be attracting more people to our town. Maybe off to a slow start, but like anything else, you need to take a chance in order to be successful. Having this selective and other great ones such as art, music, tech classes, culinary, and many other gift, others, give those an opportunity to explore what they might, they want to do for their future career and shape them into a more well-rounded student. Working hard on RTI SRBI intervention programs for students that are struggling with academics, math, or reading. If you do not serve these students, they will be at risk of falling even further behind. We built a new school for Birch Grove. Special thanks to Senator Champagne, state representative Acker, and Wilson Phineas. And Dr. Willett, along with many employees on the Town and Board of Ed side. They've spent thousands of hours working hard on this massive project. I've had the opportunity to be able to be part of hiring outstanding principals and assistant principals to help our schools be stronger. We've been need new technology for sixth graders. I hope someday all students in our schools will have those in their ears. Almost done. Implementing mastery-based learning, I have seen over 1,000 students graduate. I've been able to sign over 400 diplomas and 400 middle school scholarships have my name on it. Wow, that was a privilege. I am so proud of every student that has graduated from Tom's schools. I do want to give recognition also to teachers, paraprofessionals, administration, and guidance counselors. These men and women probably spend more time with our children and they give their best every day with conditions such as working in modulars at Birch Grove Grove, class size above 25, curriculum changes in dealing with more manual mistakes. I feel very lucky to have served with this outstanding board and past board. We have amazing student reps and impressive students and athletes. Most importantly, thank you for all those who have supported me along the way. My goal has always been to listen, keep emotions low, advocate for every student, and be bipartisan. This community cannot move forward without listening and working together. I'm very hopeful whoever is elected to Town Council and Board of Ed in November, that they will have learned from past mistakes. This is what we teach our children. Learn from your mistakes and try better next time. We also teach our kids to respect each other, work together, help and listen to each other, and try your best. I think we should use the same lessons we teach our children and apply them to each other. We are supposed to be their role models. Lastly, whoever is elected and sits in these chairs, be proud of that. Advocate for all students and staff. That should be your goal every time you enter this room. Don't worry about party agendas that you belong to. Be bold and stand up for what is right.
I'm practicing. Proud of us a lot too, everybody, it really slimmed it down. I just wanted to touch base with everybody that's been involved. I should have, I wanted to mention Lisa and Lissa back there, but, but I figured...
We just did.
I just figured there's so many people in this room at the same time. And that was really a good opportunity to recognize everybody. Candidates, reps, whoever's out there. But that's it. So, how was it?
And it's not easy to do the job of chair, so you've done an amazing job. It's very hard to sit there and do all of this. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Alright, so any other points of affirmation? Alright, actually, Dr. Willett, it's too bad.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped for no good reason. Reason for here.
Okay, um, so yesterday was, uh, a DECA Fall Leadership Conference. So, uh, any of the kids in DECA who wanted to participate, I forget exactly where they went. Dr. Willett, do you...
University of David.
Yeah, yes, yep, that's, that's what it was. Um, and they had quite a few finalists for, uh, their Shark Tank portion. So everyone knows what Shark Tank is. Um, it's DECA's version of that. And three of our students, Danya Sheik, Ethan Latier, and Emma Gleiman, were all finalists in that. So, I mean, we always talk about how, how we're proud of our students. Here's just another reason.
Um, so this week is Spirit Week at Pollen High School. Um, we came to the decision that Monday would be pajama day. Tuesday was twinday, Wednesday was sports day, tomorrow is oka day, and then Friday is must-apply day. So we had seen a lot of engagement from the students and there've been a lot of, like, spirit at the rehearsal. And more in pastures, I think it takes this time.
Yeah, uh, Friday is also pep rally. And so, uh, we've got, we've got some, uh, how, how do I say? We have a speech tomorrow about how to treat the underclassmen that have pep rallyed up. Because it has gotten around in past years, but I mean, one thing that I think we all look forward to seeing more of in Tom's schools is just kindness and respect and really in the world, but Tom's schools specifically here. Um, and hopefully it will be a good, uh, a, a good pep rally, a competitive one, but, uh, a nice one as well. Uh, then after that, Saturday, October 26th, uh, from 7 to 10, is homecoming. It is the, uh, the autumn harvest homecoming. So we're celebrating fall in fall. What, what a coincidence. Did we brand that? That's, that's pretty much all we've got going on right now.
The homecoming, the football game is Friday night.
Yes, yes.
Um, did you, Bishop, did you say there's a speech tomorrow with the...
Yeah, we, we have an assembly, uh, tomorrow.
Assembly, okay.
Yeah, in upperclass, yeah, we have an, um, assembly just talking about how it is, it's important to treat everyone with respect, including underclassmen, even if that includes changing the sad traditions of pep rallies.
Great, thank you.
It's tough to be a freshman, but we can at least make it easier for them.
I have my own things.
My thank you, my thank you.
Any comments for our...
Thank you guys for your service as well.
Thank you.
So the very first board agenda item tonight from Superintendent's report is the recognition of board members. Ms. Udichek already gave, uh, a really wonderful statement on, on all the work and all the achievements that have occurred. We are saying, um, goodbye, not forever, but just for the moment to, uh, to some wonderful members tonight. I'm going to read their names and their years of service. Um, and we do have some, some things we would like to provide to them in honor of their time and all the energy that they gave. So Sam Altastine from 2013 to 2019, Bob Pedoni from 2003 to 2019, Jane Cassini from 2017, yeah, he's Latin for punishment. Jane Cassini, 2017 to 2019, Justerated from 2015 to 2019, and Colin Udichet from 2014 to 2019. So there is no greater service really that can be done to a town or community than to serve on any of its boards or any of the, you know, public service opportunities that are out there. And it certainly can, it can be unforgiving. So, you know, thank you so much for everything that you have done. And, um, without further ado, hand it over to, uh, Ms. Moran, who, uh, is...
Yes, sure. So you all have gift bags inside you, but, um, I have a sample here that I can, so you don't have to open them up, but, um, you have gotten the golden apple. And how's your name at Pollen Board of Education? And your service on the board is very nice. Waiting for memory of its years here at the desk. I would just say thank you to everybody.
Jeff was, was going to be there.
Christina, Shell, Colleen, Bob, Jane, Kate, Sam. It's hard work that we do up here. And, and some people call it a thankless job, but, um, I personally have had people say thank you to me for the job that we do. So, um, I, I think you should take that with you as, uh, a great service to the Tom community and I so appreciate all the work that we've done together behind this desk. Thank you all. Enjoy your apples. Don't try anything else. They are not edible. Dr. Willett, if you want to introduce someone to the stage for this part, or...
Each one of them, each one.
That's up to you.
Uh, how about you do that?
Okay, sure.
And then I will set up the next.
Okay, you look busy. Alright, so we do have our legislators here tonight, um, to honor our outgoing members, Representative Acker and Representative Pat Wilson Phineas. And they have some lovely citations.
David, we also just had a word to him, so...
Great.
First of all, thank you all very much. I think so often people don't understand just how difficult public service can be. And you get into it with a smile and a heartfelt love and you want it all to go well and there is a lot of pain involved and I don't think people always appreciate that. A lot of hours of after work, a lot of missing your family, a lot of struggling with things that other people aren't even thinking about. Um, but some of us know and appreciate it very greatly. It was so nice, um, being here and listening to the words that other people said because the best, uh, most gratifying thing has to be the respect of your colleagues and clearly you have that. So I'll step aside and let Tim see the words and then he'll give you your six seconds.
It's hard to follow such great speeches, especially Colleen and then I've got to follow Pat. So, and, and Karen, same thing in terms of, you know, the thanks for everything. And it's great how you joke. I don't know of any Board of Ed that had to go through what you did over this last summer with a school that has to be replaced. I can't, from all the things that you were balancing, just from the regular school system and the issues in the school system that come up, and all the great programs that were implemented while your tenure that you've been doing this, but then to have to think about replacing a school. That, uh, is a laudable cause that you stepped up to and took on and it's getting done. So, uh, congratulations on that. The most precious thing that each and every one of us can give of ourselves is our time. It's irreplaceable. So when you come each evening and whether it's go to school to participate in a program or to come here and be a part of your families, it's priceless. And, uh, thank you for all the years, whether it's two years or 16 years or whatever else your next, your next venture is going to be. Because you're the caliber of people that there will be another venture in some manner. And, uh, so I thank you. I know that the residents of Pollen thank you all for what you've done and what you've given. Uh, so we have a couple of citations that we'd like to put. Actually, too many, by the way. It's, I'm not like, what's going on here? So, uh, but, uh, you know, um, good for you and, uh, and so I'll let Pat start with...
Okay. Last one, just mind when you read this all. They love to make these things with this old writing.
They write it in old things.
Yeah, right.
I know it's small, but then you write it in old things.
They, they all read, mostly... They all read mostly the same except for you. They all read mostly the same except for years of service. So it says, State of Connecticut General Assembly, um, official citation, introduced by Representative Pat Wilson Phineas, fifty-third district, Representative Tim Ackard, eighth district, and Senator Dan Champagne, thirty-fifth district. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to the individual in recognition of serving on the Tomm Board of Education for the past number of years. Thank you for your service, best wishes in all of your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given this twenty-third day of October, twenty nineteen, in the state of Connecticut, Hartford, Connecticut, by President Pro-Tim Martin Louis, the Speaker of the House, and Denise, oh, speak.
Joe Marisim.
Oh, correct.
Yeah, we didn't know we're doing that.
And Secretary of State Denise Mio, so, um.
Would you want them all to come up once? And, yeah, you're right, yeah. So, what do you wanna do?
Take a picture?
Take a photo.
Yeah.
Everybody come up that's getting one? And let's, um, I'm gonna, wanna take a photo of them to give them, okay?
Thank you.
Come right here, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just not here, right?
Thank you, Matt.
This is sixteen years old, Robert, this is. Why can't I take a picture? Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, well, let's do that, just get right like this, and then we'll, that's what you wanna do. We need back to. That works? How about, uh? Usually that's, that's a weird call.
Very nice.
Paul, just scoop your shoulder.
Karen's gotta get help.
That's gonna sit. I'll be cutting the rest, I don't want it, I don't want the rest. Thank you, thank you, Pat, so much, thank you so much.
I'll get rid of these, you might know what's happening.
Unless they do. Um, you guys, any sort of?
Thank you, guys.
I wonder if Miss Feldman, or something, she was, her with me.
Take care of this, the same. Yes, sir. Heard no timing yet?
Yeah, right, right, we did it.
Good.
Wow, we could talk that hours.
We just, fine, take care of that. Hi, Ken.
Please, please.
Hi, Ken.
Are you good? Always, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Have fun, Karen. I won't make this. Take care of these.
Um, yes, Bob has a few words.
I scribbled these down while I was sitting here, I didn't wanna be too prepared for this. Um, I got asked over sixteen years ago by the Democrats if I would run for office. This is a long, long time Republican, I'm a military guy, that's just the way it's done. I said, come on, don't worry about it, and I took him up on it. And my time was really filled up, because I'm in the military, I'm out of the state all the time, I'm working at American Airlines, I'm out of the state all the time, out of the country. Um, but I still found time. And I'm really direct, and it's just that the new people who are, whether you're here tonight or you're gonna be elected, it's great that you found the time, because you do take away a lot of time for family and we all know that. And my congratulations regardless to who gets elected. Um, any new people, I encourage you to read the state laws, know what you're doing up here, because you can't just come up here and do what you want, the state laws tell you what to do. Um, to the families, all of us give up a lot of time for our families. And to the, my wife over there, Janet, this may be her first board event meeting since two years. I have to bid, my schedule, I usually have to bid to work weekends, year in and year out, just so I can make the two board meetings plus all the other stuff. And it gets old after a while, and finally she says, um, in the dura, we're gonna get divorced. And I had to think, uh, when I got elected, there was a lot of bipartisanship that first two years. After that, I think I started it, but each chair, all the way to this chair, has done an excellent, excellent, excellent job of bipartisanship and leadership. The nine of us, every time, kinda are in the same boat. We think the same way, because we've done our homework, we've studied the state laws, we've talked to people. And what we try to do is represent what is best for the community via what is best for the children of this community. And I think it's important to listen to what your experts up here say, because they go to a far lot, a lot more meetings than everybody else. And, uh, they're doing honest work, and it's volunteer work. Um, Lisa, Lisa. Mike, who's always got his, it's like Norm.
How nice.
Um, Liz and Kate, Kenny, you guys are always here, you're always engaging us. You've got those emails, I cannot tell you two in particular how important it is that you engage us. When you tell us we're doing good, and when you tell me I'm doing bad, I appreciate that, okay? It's all part of the deal, it's what we signed up for, but your encouragement is huge. Um, Lou, in the entire time I've been on the board, I wanna address this right now. There's never, ever been any conspiracy for a hidden agenda. And, and you said that two or three times, but I wanna put that to rest. There has never been any hidden, hidden agenda. You may not like the reasons that'll come out tonight, but there's, there's nothing going on like this, this board right now is trying to push something through, because if that was true, I would know it. And I don't, I haven't heard that, so, uh, without my approval, wouldn't happen, right?
This is the first time we're hearing promoted tonight?
Um, and then this guy right here, my friend. This guy works his butt off every day for all the kids in this community, for everybody sitting up here, for everyone. I've never seen a guy work so hard, he's wearing twenty hats. I, I'm waiting for him to have an ulcer or say, I quit. This man is the best thing that ever happened to Tolland and for the Board of Education and for the students in this community. Every day you should thank God that this guy works for us, because he is worth every penny and a lot more. Do not make life hard on him by not supporting him and having him go somewhere else, because you will never replace this person at the amount of money we paid for him. He should be paid far more and should have two or three assistants, okay? So, I really encourage the next group to come on board. If you can do nothing but get this guy a curriculum coordinator, the system will definitely improve. But my hat, in fact, please, orange.
Okay, I got a few words, and I didn't prepare anything either, but, um, I, I won't. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Colleen. I think both of you guys are very eloquent, and I agree with everything you said. Um, and I'm gonna try not to repeat any stuff, but, um, I just wanna pick up on the theme of service. We have, we have a lot of folks who have served, actually, if you raise your hand if you've served either on an elective board or, and some, some, or, or if you're running for elective board, most of the people in this room. And, and I would hope that you agree with me in saying it's worth it. You know, it's been six years for me, and, um, at some point, wherever the trigger is, somebody asks you or, um, something happens, but at some point you say, you know what? If I, if I wanna talk about it and, and vent about it, I wanna really do something about it. And I think we've all come to that point, and we've all stepped up, and, you know, you work hard, and you, you, you try to get elected, and it's, you, you go around, you door knock, you raid the towers, and it's not easy, and it doesn't get any easier. But it's a hundred percent worth it, it's been a privilege. Dr. Willis, thank you so much. You know, I think, um, a lot of the things people talk about isn't really what we do, it's what is done inside the schools and your leadership, that we are privileged to be able to, um, deeply understand and influence in some ways. Um, it's been a privilege. Yeah, I think I wouldn't have done this for six years if it wasn't for the people who we get to do it with. Everybody around this table, a number of you, um, who've served in the past. It's, um, I'm inspired by you guys, you know, because I know next month I get to, I get to do that and not do this, and the fact that you're here today and still around and still interested and still, um, you know, I just, I just look out at folks and just remember your contribution and the things that, um, the issues we addressed together. We don't all agree, you know, we've never all agreed, we're not supposed to agree. We don't do our work behind the scenes. One thing this board's always done is, we come here, we probably don't know what the decision is going to be a lot of times. And that's, I think, where we're supposed to do things. We, we hear about things, we listen to each other, and, um, I think it can be sometimes messy, it looks so, it looks a little, um, I, I think it should look messy, it means that we're doing our work in public, and, um, that's it. Thank you guys for your service, thank you guys for your service, thank you, Dr. Willis, it's been a privilege.
Well, I'll just take a couple of words, 'cause I'm the only one leaving that hasn't said anything. Um, uh, I'd like to thank you all for working with me, um, the public for being gracious and, uh, electing me up here. It has been probably two of the hardest years of my life, um, I'm not gonna lie. And, uh, but it's been worth it, I agree with you, Sam, um, I've learned a lot. I always joke on the side that I should've at least gotten a PhD or a JD after the amount of reading I've done in the last two years. Um, but no, it was worth it, and I feel like our work, um, was very well done for the town, and there's a lot more work to do. And I hope whoever gets elected on November fifth, um, puts partisanship behind them and decides that, uh, what is best for the town, um, is best for the students, is best for the seniors, um, and use the entire community as your, um, vision. Um, so that is my hope, and thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
I do want, I just wanna thank you for your service again. Um, thank you for your kind words, and I'm also deeply grateful to be able to have worked with you and worked for Tom. You have accomplished a tremendous amount. And in the time that I came in here, um, you moved the district forward in a number of ways, so. Uh, I'm not sure if anybody understands the myriad of ways that you've done that, but I, I know, I know the ways that you have. So I'm just deeply thankful to have had the time to be able to have worked with you, thank you for it.
Good morning, Colleen, I've got my wife's been to school with the first graders all day, can she read now?
Bless you. First graders all day, bless you.
Yeah.
So, uh, moving to the G two, we have Jenna Webster, who is our senior curriculum s- not supervisor here tonight, to present, um, a presentation on the math, uh, math program. Um, each month, each, uh, of the next couple of meetings, we will have the, the supervisors come to present to the Board of Education, and it's part of the stuff that's been in the sort of parking lot for a while, so, um, so I have tried to, uh, set the technology up into your, to be the most useful for you. If you click, she'll move it forward. And I'm finding that it's not going back, so when you need to go back, tell me, I'll go back, okay?
My standover here is my back is not facing everyone. Alright, thank you for letting, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jenna Webster, for those who don't know me, I'm the K twelve math supervisor for the district. It's been an honor working in Tolland, our, our staff and our board and our students are just phenomenal, and I've been having a great time here. Uh, today, let's see what button you told me to press, here we go. Um, I'm just gonna be giving an overview of some ways that we're exploring math and building capacity for our students and for our staff. Give an overview of some math intervention that's been happening, K five, and the priors that we've made in math intervention, and giving an overview of curriculum updates and text updates, and some things that we can look forward to in the future to help support math instruction and the success of our students. Uh, so the first thing that we've done is, for the last two years, uh, both myself and our intervention staff and teachers have attended, uh, the National Council of Teaching Mathematics. Uh, that is a picture of two of our middle school teachers who went this year to the conference. We've also had the Associated Teachers of Mathematics in Connecticut Conference last year, uh, last year didn't happen, the year before, and this year. Um, those conferences are, uh, teacher choice, and they offer a variety of sessions that include, uh, uh, state updates, curriculum revisions, discourse, rigor, um, uh, self-interest, content interest, uh, a variety of things that really make our teaching stronger. And, uh, I've encouraged teachers to, to go with me and to really choose something that excites them, so that they can take a risk and try something new, to bring something new to their classrooms, um, and to support their students in different ways. Uh, the feedback that I've gotten from teachers has been really great, going to these conferences. Um, we hold a session where they come in afterwards and share out with, between them, and then they have made a presentation, go back to their buildings, and share all the resources and ideas and, and, uh, new things that they've learned to their staff. And I've seen, um, for example, one of our seventh grade teachers, she went, she was really interested in mathematical mindset. For those who me, who talk to me about math mindset and math placement, I love talking about that. I, I, I love the idea of our confidence and our way that we look at ourselves as mathematicians impacting us growing and our students growing. I often say, you know, who's ever gone into a restaurant and tried to split a check, and they find the math person of the group, and they're, will you try it for me? And, and I'm always that person, but I never go to my friends and ask them to read me the menu, because I'm not a reading person. Um, so building that math confidence and that mathematical mindset, um, not only with our students and our teachers, but our, our peers and our parents and our community members, so that, you know, no one should ever say that I'm bad at math, because you're good at something in math. We all use math every day, so it's something that I really enjoy talking about, she heard me discuss it, and talk about Joe Bolger's work. She went to the NCTM Conference and attended a variety of sessions on mathematical mindset, and now she's bringing it back to her building and her other department members and other team members, and they're really talking about growth ma- mindset, mathematical mindset, and how to build that capacity with teachers and students. So I really see a lot of transference between these conferences and what's going on in our schools. It's been really great to see. Um, some things that we've done to explore math, which we haven't done yet. Oh, last year was our first year, it was very exciting. In, uh, both in Birch, at TIS and TMS, we celebrated three math events. At Birch Grove, we celebrated the hundredth day of school, where students worked on number sense, counting principles. I think we came up with like over fifty lessons on how to work with the number one hundred. Um, there was a, uh, runway model show that kindergarten put on of all the different ways that they could make one hundred, and they like put it on their clothes, and they like walked the runway. Um, the kids really get involved with it, making different numbers, uh, using their number sense in different ways, and the whole building really gets excited about it. Um, for T I- For T I S Math Week, we picked a week. Uh last year it ran in March and each day was a different activity, ranging from a math scavenger hunt throughout the building, a uh journey through mathematics of history where students learned about all different mathematicians, um genders, races, ethnicities, all do all over the world. A teacher and I were were joking that we weren't just talking about those dead white guys, you know, of the all those famous mathematicians like Euclid and and things that they'll be really talking about, things that kids can identify with and really build a relationship with so that we're building a narrative behind math and not that, not just that we have to solve this equation or we just have to solve fractions or we have to, we have to memorize all of our facts and and why those things are important and where they happen in our daily life and in in history. Um at the middle school last year, we ran Pi Day, three point one four, so March, March fourteenth. We did a variety of activities. One of them was uh memorize the digits of pi. We had a seventh grader memorize over three hundred digits of pi on on her own. Um she was actually a really tight race. I think the difference was an eight-digit difference between first place and second place. They got heavily invested in it. They created songs and and rhymes to memorize the digits. Um each grade level also with with me, we collaborated and designed lessons for each grade level so that every year at T M S moving forward, every grade level gets a different experience. In the sixth grade, they are working with long division. That's one of their fluency standards is long of division multi-digit multi-digit numbers. So they came, they read the story Circumference, which if you'd like to borrow it, I have a variety of copies. I also have the whole series at home. This is a super mathner. And um they uh they read that book about circumference, introduced parts of a circle, and then measured the circumference and the diameter of a variety of circular shapes and did use their standard of long division to figure out that every time they did that division, they kept kept coming up with something very close to three point one four. And they, as a group, determined and derived that when you take the circumference divided by its diameter, you end up getting pi every time. In seventh grade, they did a stat project called Buffon's Needle. Um Buffon is a mathematician that said that if you took a piece of paper and had lines um drawn, kind of like this, in equal distance and dropped a hundred toothpicks, the ratio of toothpicks touching the lines and not touching the lines is actually pi almost every time. It's a an approximation of pi. And so that aligns to their seventh grade statistics standards um of probability. So they had a whole conversation about the statistics that they did in class and how it goes along with the Buffon's Needle project. In eighth grade, they um in seventh grade, they do a lot of constructions and geometry. Graders took their prior knowledge of constructions and completed Archimedes' exhaustion method. So uh Archimedes said that if you had a circle and you draw a bunch of polygons inside of it and keep increasing the amount of sides of polygons, the perimeter will essentially be very, uh the limit of it would be very close to the circumference. And you can use the ratio of the circumference to the side of the polygon inside to approximate pi. It actually works if you inscribe it or if the polygons on the outside as well. So the eighth graders constructed all these polygons within and outside of circles and computed all the proportions and ratios and found, in fact, they were estimating pi every time. So every grade level got to investigate a a different mathematician and a different concept of pi that relates directly to the standards that are in their content in their grade level. Uh next up would be math intervention. We have spent the last few years really building a strong intervention team. We um have put together math intervention at Birch Grove, T I S and T M S. We have highly qualified trained teachers who are forming, looking at data to review all building data for every grade level. Um we triangulate all of our benchmark assessments, prior year's benchmark assessments, and as the year goes on, all of our assessments go out to determine students who are in the most need um of intervention. And that could be students who are several years behind their peers. It could be students who are really struggling in a particular area. We really um, we don't put a solid button on it because we wanna be responsive to the needs of the students in front of us. So if a if a if we're noticing in our data set a trend of needing support in a particular standard or particular area, we wanna be responsive to that and provide that instruction and intensive support to those students so that we can bring them back to where they should be um in relation to their peers. Uh we also use our intervention team to help collaborate with other teachers in the building. Because it's really awesome when our students are successful in intervention, but we need that transference back into the classroom so that they're being successful in intervention and exiting and being successful in the classroom afterwards. So our intervention team work very closely with our classroom teachers, with uh our curriculum staff so that we're having transference in between intervention and the classroom. And we also report student progress. We progress monitor on a weekly basis. We look at benchmark assessments and we communicate with parents and staff and building to track our progress of students, to highlight students who are really making a great, great progress and can exit intervention and students who are not making great progress and we need to brainstorm some other interventions and other supports to um bring them to where they need to be. Uh this year for math intervention, both for K eight intervention, and K is kind of like a broadband. The program focused specifically on K five standards, but we're finding our sixth and seventh grade intervention groups needing support in that. So our middle school interventionist does use Bridges Intervention to support some of her sixth and seventh grade classes. Um we're also using it with our K eight special ed teachers and our special ed students. Uh Bridges Intervention is a subset of Bridges Math Instruction. Uh it is highly rated from uh Ed Report. They uh their alignment ratings is meets meets expectations for every grade level. They also rate focus and coherence, rigor in math practices, and usability of the program for both teachers and students. And their rating for focus and coherence is um all of them are above eighty-five percent for every grade level. For rigor in math practices, it's above eighty-eight percent, and for usability, it's above ninety-seven percent. Um so it's a highly rated program. Just in the few months that we've been working on it, these are pictures of our um the bottom left corner is our special ed students and then the two up on the top are intervention groups using intervention. I've had a lot of feedback from special ed teachers and interventionists that the students are extremely motivated, involved, they love the lessons, they're engaging. And um we have some data, very initial data showing that students are really making progress. Um so that's exciting. It provides targeted instructions specific to um major cluster standards in each grade level. Um so we don't hold a student to a particular grade level. The the way that it's set up is by modules and each module covers a slew of of standards. So if we give the placement assessment and triangulate all of our data and a student places in module two, that's where we're gonna start because we're really trying to meet the needs of each student. Um it's, the program itself really works on building confidence, building mathematical mindset, building number sense, and going from manipulatives to pictorial representations to abstract concepts. Um and everyone's really enjoying it so far. Um here's a general overview of some data from last year. So at Birch Grove, we serviced fifty-seven students. At a T I S, we serviced ninety-four, and at the middle school, we serviced sixty-six. The chart, it's kind of hard to see actually in here, but there are some numbers that are bolded, and let me talk about it. In the Kinder column, you'll see there's a key on the right. O C stands for oral counting, and I is number identification. Q D is quantity discrimination, and F stands for fluency. For all the other grade levels, the numbers represent data from their fluency, district fluency assessment. So what you're looking at is the average point growth from the beginning of the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year to the end of the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. The top row is the grade level growth. So for example, on average, in grade two, that grade level grew fourteen point nine points on their fluency assessment. Intervention students grew twenty-two point two student uh points on average. So in in the bolded ones are the ones that made more growth than the other row. You'll notice that our intervention students are actually making more growth on average than our our whole grade population. Um that's really, really important because students who are intervention are typically several years behind our their peers. So if we're making more growth or at least equal to the growth that their peers are, we're really starting to catch them up and fill in those gaps so that they could be achieving and reaching the success of their peers. Um so that was really exciting data. Um particularly, if you look at kindergarten, uh last year's intervention at kindergarten really focused on number sense and oral counting, and they made on average twenty-six point eight percent growth compared to their whole grade level, which was seventeen point nine. Um and our intervention team was amped about that because we've made so much growth with those uh kindergartners coming in. So that was some really great data to look at. Um some curriculum updates as we get to that. Oh, I did, I did. I just can't go back. No. Um so uh in curriculum for K eight, we are using math in focus. We are working in curriculum teams throughout the last year and this year to work on aligning our math in focus book to the common core and have that articulated in our curriculum. Um we also implemented Reflex and I X L. Reflex and I X L are softwares that are online. Reflex focuses on specifically the automaticity part of fluency. So fluency with all operations, adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing. Um but adding and subtracting is within zero to ten and multiplying and dividing is within zero to twelve. And I say specifically the automaticity part because there's, just realized my glasses. Sorry. Um the automaticity part is just one component of uh fluency. There's strategies, efficient and effective choice of strategies, and being able to apply those in a lot of different ways. So just because a student doesn't have automaticity, which is knowing a fact within three seconds, if they know that they can use a doubles fact to figure out another fact, that is also part of fluency. If they're trying to find another fact and they're like, hmm, double strategy or make ten, and they can pick the most efficient strategy because they're not quick yet with it, then that is also a being efficient and effective in your choice of strategy. Um so Reflex Math is uh online. Essentially, it's kind of like a game. The kids are enthralled in it. Um they love Reflex. I get a lot of feedback on that. And it it really focuses on the speed component um of of facts, and I have some data on that in a second. For I X L, it's kind of the opposite. It's a program that practice, that's just practice of content. It's it spans pre K to twelve, content for math. Students can go in and it will give you a diagnostic. It's an ongoing diagnostic that as you answer questions, kind of pinpoint whether students are, and then can make recommendations for practice and lessons um aligned to where the program deems a student might be. Teachers can also give recommendations to students that I'd like you to go on tonight and do section D three because that's a review of what we're gonna be doing tomorrow. Um t- kids can also go in and just go, you know what, I'm really interested and into triangles today. I'm gonna go learn everything I can in the triangle section. So there's a lot of choice and a lot of practice. And we have uh some data on that as well. So here's some Reflex data. Uh something that's really, and I'll talk about Birch Grove in a second. So some something on Reflex is we want students to be on three times a week um to achieve a green light. A green light's typically fifteen to twenty minutes. Um it could be shorter, it could be longer. It depends on how the student does. Um so it's really responsive to them. Uh so we're looking at the percent of students earning a green light. The goal would be at seventy percent. Please keep in mind, this data is from September twentieth to October twenty-first. So it's about a month worth of data for the beginning of the school year. It's also important to note that Birch Grove had a technical error in their upload for logins. So that span of time is not as equal to the other buildings. So their data looks a little skewed because they haven't been using it as long as the rest of the buildings have. So with the more usage, I really believe that they'll be able to uh meet the growth that the other buildings have. Um so for example, so there's starting fluency. That number is the percent of fluent facts in each building. So just gonna uh at T even within the week, or it's, I think since we fixed it, it's been about two weeks at Birch Grove. So within about two weeks or so, they've gone from having thirty-three percent of their facts mastered to thirty-nine point seven of their facts mastered. And T I S, forty-nine point five percent of their facts mastered to sixty-eight point five percent. And at T M S, sixty-seven point nine to seventy-four point seven percent. If you look to the left, it shows you a breakdown of what students are working on. So at Birch Grove, about ninety-five percent of students are working on adding and subtracting zero to ten. Five percent of them are on multiplication and division. So it's, if you're doing that at the beginning of the year, what that means, so for Reflex Math, we start everyone at addition and subtraction. So that five percent of students means that they have already achieved a hundred percent fluency on adding and subtracting and we're moved to multiplication and division. T I S uh is about seventy-thirty uh, you know, kind of split. As the year goes on, T I S is the most that fluctuates because they're really transitioning from addition, subtraction to more multiplication fluency. And T M S, we've got some kids, about five, they're kind of flipped from Birch Grove, about five percent is on adding and subtracting, and ninety-five is at um multiplying and dividing. So this is, I, in this small amount of time that we've had using Reflex this year, um some of our growth has just been uh phenomenal. And uh our kids really love doing it. We have celebrations in all of our buildings when students reach a hundred percent fluency and get to move on to the next section. Um there are long, long debated studies on which game is the best game. There are uh bar charts, uh bar graphs made and pie graphs made that are posted in T I S about the, you know, the Mr. Crab and his favorite game. So the kids are really invested and the teachers uh appreciate the data that comes with it. Um for I X L, there are two things to look at. I X L has research that shows that if you have answered at least fifteen questions per week, it has a measurable impact on student outcomes. They also have something called a SMART score, and their SMART score is calculated by their algorithm that takes into account accuracy, consistency, um the the degree of difficulty of a problem, the content of the problem. And they're looking for that number to be above point eight. Again, Birch Grove had technical issue. They haven't been using the program for as long, so their data is a little skewed. Um once they use it for longer, when, because it just got fixed, I expected similar usage and some of their similar results. So T I S, um for the last month, they've answered on average thirty-three questions a week. Um and their SMART score is at point eight, so that's at the threshold that we're looking for. And T M S is on average fifty-five questions a week, and they are at uh even one point oh SMART score, which is the highest we can get. So we're really looking at this data to say, if if I X L has data to support their SMART score and their statement about fifteen questions, that we should be seeing that transition and these and this growth in students in our classrooms and intervention and um across our district. This is where I have to, two please. Thank you. Thank you. So uh at T H S, in the last few years, we've upgraded some textbooks that were significantly out of date. We have a new Algebra One textbook that is used at the eighth grade level for Algebra One A and Algebra One A B. And it's also used in the high school for Algebra One A and Algebra One A, I'm sorry, Algebra One B. It has, it is a print text that also has a full online component that every student has access to. Uh our intermediate math book was also out of date, no longer in print actually. And uh this year, we are using our brand new book. It is a, it actually turned our intermediate curriculum i- in a different fashion. The scope and sequences changed, and that was one of the things that interested our teachers the most because it built on knowledge and built on problem solving in a different way. Um and we're we're seeing our teacher feedback from the book so far has been really great and our our kids seem to um have a better handle on the conceptual applications of the of the course. The next book that we're looking for is a non-level geometry book. Um it is out of date by about eleven or twelve years. Um and so we're exploring lots of options right now. Um I am using data to drive that. Ed Reports has evaluations on almost every textbook out there and programs that are coming out there. Um there's a lot of great things coming out for the high school as we're looking at catalyzing change in the high school, both at the state level and the and the nation and nationwide. Um so there's a lot of new things that are aligned that are coming out that we're exploring. Um the last thing to talk about today is um talking about math. Things that we're moving forward with that I'm really, really excited about. One of them is mathematical mindset. We kind of talked about that a little bit. Um some other things that I'm bringing into our classrooms is called math argumentation. It's a very simple and straightforward way for students to justify their reasoning and debate math and have students talking about math and justifying and debate with each other, nobody, this is the best strategy you use, and this is why. And this is the why I use this strategy, because this is why it's more efficient. Um there's um some different activities that are quick and simple and easy to reach to our classrooms. There's very specific sentence stems to be using in our classrooms. There's very specific sentence stems to be using in our classrooms so that not only it's consistent around our district, but so that they can go home and we can also help parents use those sentence stems and we can all be debating math together because who doesn't want to do that every day? I would love to do that. We're looking at, I'm looking at some math libraries, something that I think that we're really short in is interdisciplinary support between math literacy and science, especially with our graduation requirements going to a STEAM requirement. We are not really in isolation. Math is ELA, ELA is math, science is math, we're all intertwined. So building up some math libraries for our buildings that are leveled by reading level, learning a lot about that recently, and leveled by subject, by content area, by Common Core standard and labeling these, the libraries so that teachers and students can access them to be responsive to what they need in their classrooms. There's also this really awesome thing, anyone can do it, it's called What's With This Graph? And it's produced by the New York Times. So we're going to be working on implementing this in our classrooms. Every Wednesday, the New York Times puts out a thing called What's With This Graph? And it gives a graph that is missing some information. And it really prompts students to go, what do you notice? What do you wonder? Could you come up with a cool title for the graph based on what you're noticing and wondering? And it really forges a conversation in your classroom to analyze and apply things, to really think about what you're looking at without much information. And then nationwide and actually across the world, from Wednesday to Friday, teachers and students of all ages are putting, are talking to the New York Times. My class thinks that the title could be this. We're not doing that currently, but we're just doing this in our classrooms. And on Friday, the New York Times put out, puts out a supplemental resource of the graph with more information, with a synopsis of what it is, with great titles that people across the world came up with and tidbits of notice and wonder facts and, and thoughts from all over the world. So it's a really great way to get real-world application, to build up our critical thinking skills, to really brush up and practice over and over again our statistical analysis skills. And the prompt of what you notice and what you wonder is really important because I really feel like we are, we are educating our students to solve problems that don't exist currently and solutions that don't exist. So being able to have this skill to look at something and to do something and analyze something with not much information is really great to foster. And the last thing is in addition to my, the math libraries, the TEF granted us a grant this year to do a miniature release of Scholastic Math and Dynamath. Their interactive read alouds essentially that are real-world articles. It's like getting a newspaper in the, in the mail once a month. I know everyone would be excited about that too. I am. But the students get it in the mail, they get a paper copy and they have an online component where you can go in and read the articles. There's also games and activities, there's leveled lessons, there's performance tests, there's activities, there's you name it that aligns to all the different real-world articles that they're reading in print and online. And we were able to, through the grant, to get every teacher, grade three through five is Dynamath. They got ten paper copies and ten online subscriptions for each classroom, including our intervention staff. And then at the middle school, six, eight, same thing, ten print copies and ten online subscriptions for this school year. And we'll be gathering some feedback and data. And if it's something that we're going to use and something that we find functional and responsive to our students, we'll look at how we can get that whole class set in the future. So that, that's our math overview and update. I think I went over my top. If anyone has any questions, I'm here.
The irony of you doing it on molda.
I'm sorry.
The irony of you doing this on molda.
Molda.
Molda?
I've been asking Howard.
Six point oh two times ten to the power.
Six point oh two times ten to the power.
Two to the second.
There you go.
Just a quick thing, this.
I mean, you learn everything new every day.
Ms. Webster's amazing a math supervisor. She has taken the district in all kinds of directions that we otherwise could not have gone. The growth that we have is to her credit and the credit of the interventions and others. She's just done an amazing job, so I just wanted to, to give her some compliments here and thank her for the presentation today.
Thanks very much.
Can I?
Thank you, yeah.
One question. Nice presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
What, I'm just curious, not question, just curious, what causes a geometry book to get outdated? It's not like a history book, you know?
Sure. So, moving towards Common Core, if a book was published like two thousand and five, a pretty old publication, our standards are not new and fresh, but they focus on something different. So many geometry books will focus solely on proofs. Well, looking at the Common Core standards, that's not the sole focus any longer in a high school geometry class. They revisit volume, they revisit surface area, there's a lot of angle problems going on. So it's not that the book is out of date. We certainly could use parts of it as a resource, but we're missing chunks of information that this data is saying is a requirement of our standards of geometry.
Can I just ask a quick question? What are the updates that are being planned for the upper level classes like Algebra Two, elementary functions and pre-cap?
Sure. So we're working with Understand by Design. It's a way to think backwards in our curriculum, so starting where do we want students to be? And how do we get there? What do we want them to understand, what would be able to do? And what are the skills that they need to know? And by doing that, we started at the high school because that's essentially working backwards also. When they graduate, where do we want them to be and how do we scaffold that down? So this year, we've started that process and we have teachers really getting familiar with that process so that we can look vertically at our standards, making sure that our courses are aligned to the Common Core standards and revisit and update all of those, not just in their content, but how they all bleed to each other and how a non-leveled, and a CP class and an honors class work together and correlate because they should not be separate entities. So we are, it is a work in progress, curriculum doesn't happen overnight, but we have been working diligently, that's what we did today in our early release day at the high school, working to teach our teachers the process of Understand by Design so we can better update our curriculum to meet those needs of those courses.
We're also working with the Center for School Change and, and Advance in the, in the process of putting together the new vision, mission and portrait of graduate to update all of our materials and all of our curriculum, not just, not just to do it, but also because we have NEAS and C coming in five years. So we're getting ourselves in the position to make sure we're fulfilling all the 21st century standards and that we're having, getting everything aligned and ready, vision, mission, goals and portrait and graduation requirements. So it's all part of one big thing, which UBD is part of that.
Something else that we've done is thinking of what students need and looking at data of students in an Algebra Two class, we found that the middle school was not really preparing our students for those classes. So in the last two years, we've done revisions to our accelerated program so that we're really making sure that students who leave eighth grade, whether they're in an Algebra One A class or an eighth grade class, they have gotten all of their standards, sixth, seventh and eighth. And if they've taken an Algebra One A course, it is identical to the high school.
That's one of the most difficult texts.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, so the texts are as identical as well?
Yes, the eighth grade Algebra One A and A B course uses the exact text, text and assessments that the high school does. So students are really getting the same experience if they were in the high school versus the middle school, which was not the case before, which can cause a variety of things to kind of domino effect as they go to higher level courses. Taking sure that they get all of their standards, which we saw, like students who were in an accelerated class in the middle school prior to our change, they would get to geometry and really flounder because turns out the accelerated curriculum at the middle school skipped all of the eighth grade geometry standards and half of the seventh grade geometry standards. So we fixed that so that there's no, we're not creating gaps by accelerating students. We're filling the gaps, making sure they have all their middle school content and then moving them forward as well.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
I have a question. Well, I don't know what to say. What, what are our goals at the high school for intervention, I guess? And what does that, what does that look like from a math?
What's the need, what's the need and then what are the goals?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Okay. There, there is a need for intervention. My goal is to have intervention. What does that look like? Great question. Because of the collaborating with the high school on their schedule, it really, it really, we want to make, and with the new 2020 standards of how many credits do you need in which areas, we really want to make sure that we're not, that we're giving that support that's needed while also not hurting their scheduling and the other courses. So I think it really takes more to ponder with both ELA and the high school to figure out how we can support intervention, whether it be a skinny block or some sort of interventionist that maybe is paired in a co-teaching type manner with our math teachers.
During a class.
During a class so that, for example, just off the top of my head, if we were able to build some sort of math support within the class in a co-teaching model, in the eighty-four minutes, a teacher might be able to teach the lesson, give a review in the second half of the class while students are really working with that material. The interventionists would go in and gap fill or revisit or reteach or something like that in a more small group manner, but maybe within the classroom to not disrupt the flow of it. I think that the, the schedule definitely is something to think about. And not that I want to lay ELA high and dry, but there's a need for both of us, in ELA and math intervention at high school and how to make that work collaboratively as well. So I definitely think there is a need, but the how of it is, is something to really think critically about.
Great.
Thank you. No problem. Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you, the, the data, I don't know how many times you mentioned data. And some people think that decisions are made just emotionally, but it's made on data, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
There's one thing about Ms. Webster, this data.
And it would be the spreadsheet. Give me a phone.
I mean, after our data ride, we're about to go on.
Yes.
Can I just, can I just ask one more tiny question? First of all, thank you so much for all that, this is really great. Helps me to understand everything. But also, I was wondering, like, do you have an approximation based on the universal screens about how many kids would need intervention at the high school?
Currently, we don't have a universal screen at the high school. The closest thing we have, just keep my back, is to you. The closest thing we have to intervention, a universal screen for the high school is something that I train teachers in this year. So I was trained over the summer by Iowa State University. They had several brands to create algebra progress monitoring tools. There's three different ones that we have access to them, we have access to them in perpetuity. We have also access to them in general, like yesterday, I actually had a caller because I had a question about one. So what happens is any student in sixth grade advanced all the way through an Algebra One A B course at the high school, so that spans a camp of students, takes these algebra measures every two weeks. It's, they're all timed, there are, two of them are five minutes and one of them is seven minutes. And they range in specific content. So the Algebra Basic Skills is around simplifying, solving, proportional relationships, operations with whole numbers, operations with fractions, operations with integers. The Algebra Foundations includes slope, includes algebraic expressions, verbal expressions, operations with integers, definitely missing something. And the Algebra Content Analysis is more application of those skills with higher level content embedded, like slope, solving multi-step equations, variables on both sides, compounding inequalities, things like that. And these are meant to be quick progress monitoring that are quick and easy to give and quick and easy to grade. And that gives us a kind of an idea of where those students are for intervention. Something that goes along with that is our teachers are using that for their data teams. So they're able to do an item analysis. At the high school and at the middle school. And they're be able to do an item analysis. For example, I think it was over eighty percent of students who took the Algebra Basic Skills measure across the district. There was one question where they had to distribute and then combine like terms. And over, I think it was over like, I calculated the percentage, I can't remember, but it's over eighty-something percent, I think. Distributed correctly, but then combined the like terms incorrectly and they all got minus twenty-seven. It was like five N minus twenty-seven, but the answer was five N plus eight. And it was the same error over and over and over again. So our teachers also recognized that. So we built warm-ups and we've built a little mini lesson, hey, remember when we do this? And so over the, every two weeks when we give it, we're hoping to see growth in that. The other part of that is students are involved in their data. Every teacher is responsible for giving their student data back and some, and having kids involved in some way, whether it's plotting their chart, their progress on a graph, keeping in a folder, setting a goal for themselves and things like that. So that's the closest thing we have to a universal assessment. We have been looking at that data. I have not looked at it in a sense of who could qualify for intervention because we don't have the resources right now. But we definitely look at it as an instructional tool to guide where we can support Tier Two in the classroom. Okay, thank you so much. No problem. Anyone else?
Am I allowed, I don't know? I'm just curious, what are your thoughts as far as like the intermediate and the elementary? Could those classes almost be used as like an intervention or just like basically a bridge class or a student who might struggle a little bit with Algebra One? Would that give them kind of the intervention continuation that they would need before they would get to Algebra Two?
So those classes were created prior to becoming and from my knowledge of them, that's what they're intended to be. They're intended to be bridge courses, so they're not intended for every student to take them. It's really for the students who are on the cusp of, they were sort of successful in Algebra One, they went to geometry and they really need that extra dose of support to be successful in Algebra Two. Or they were just on the cusp of success, they were, but they weren't. We really need that extra support, extra reinforcement, extra application, extra practice before they go to pre-cap and that's why they might take elementary functions. So yeah, that is the intention of those courses, whether or not, you know, that's how they're, that's the intention, that's how they're scheduled essentially as well.
Would you like to keep them, I guess, if it's possible?
There's definitely a benefit to them for continuity, for intervention purposes. I just feel that those courses are not specific, specifically responsive to student needs. They're specifically responsive to curriculum needs because they may not, they may not have gotten the curriculum in a prior class, but they're not specific to your child's needs going into that class going, okay, I know you're in tenth grade, but we gotta go back to fractions. Like that's the types of intervention that we really need to really know the vertical alignment of all of our standards and be able to back up our instruction all the way even to fourth, fifth grade for students who really need that. Do those classes provide that? Not, not in the curriculum as it's written. Do teachers provide it in Tier Two when students need it? Yes, but we definitely need a more structured approach to finding those students of need at the high school and targeting that instruction so that they can be more successful, both in the bridge course and maybe without the bridge course. Yes?
Part of your discussion I really liked, you mentioned a seamless aspect of mathematics. That strikes home, I heard that loud and clear. And I think that's so important because we find it in music, we find it in engineering, we find it in business, we find it in meteorology, right, Seth, for a while, and all sorts of things. But even at the youngest grades, that they're aware, how do you learn those little things that they're scared of? They lose that fearness, you know? Hey, I like, I like music, what's the theory? How does it go along with numbers? All that stuff. Anyway, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. It's true. I mean, I, I have lots of conversations even when you go through and you want to be in music and then you have to take a music theory quiz and realize it's a secret math class and then people panic, like preparing that, knowing that a perfect fifth is really the golden ratio, that just, you know?
All that stuff, yeah.
All that good stuff. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
You need anything, let me know.
I have a question, not too much for Jen, my question is for board leadership. Why are we, why are, why are we doing this now?
Because we usually do something at the end, we get a lot, lot of ideas.
I'm just curious what the, what the administration on the math curriculum presentation at our meeting is.
I don't know the answer to that, but this is what we should be doing. This is our job. This is what we used to do much more. This is, honestly, this is what's, you've been on the board for an exceptional two years.
She wasn't, she wasn't here two years ago.
The kinds of stuff that we, breaking in and do is this kind of stuff. I miss this. I wish, I mean, this makes me had, recognize some of the things that we as a board have, didn't really miss about.
And I understand, it's just interesting that we're doing that on the last.
So if you're looking for some.
Why is it right now? I mean, it's so, this is the problem that's going on at Pini right now. You guys think there's always an agenda, there's not an agenda. This is what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay, you can yell at me.
I can't, Christina, I mean, is your, you're angry at something that this is what we're supposed to be doing.
I brought up two years ago that a student had told me that she needed help with math at the high school. I brought up two years ago that a student had told me that she needed help with math at the high school. And I've revisited that a couple of times throughout my tenure. And I just listened to the community and I heard things. And now we're doing it on the very last day of our term at nine o'clock at night.
Well, you saw it.
That's so, so what, we can go to perception here, okay? No, just let me finish. We can go to perception here, all right? The perception is we are doing something the day before our term is done.
Our work isn't done until, I've actually, our work isn't done until
No, no, but I think the conversation to me is curious because we just did a presentation about mathematics, just as a presentation on mathematics. It's, I've been talking about the high school for, I mean, this is, you know, I have to, with respect to RTI and SFR resources not being available at the high school. So that reality is a reality. Whether there was a math presentation here tonight or not, that's reality. This is simply a math presentation. We've had a couple of things in our parking lot that we tried to squeeze in, did master online presentations with others, had negotiations and other things that got on the agenda, but you know, there were community nights on these types of things, there's curriculum nights and anyone could have availed themselves to any of those things. There was a series of those things all throughout the last couple of years. So doing it here in this forum doesn't exclude anyone who have gone to any of the other forums we had on this in any of the other schools, and there were quite a few. So my concern is, this was simply a math presentation tonight. To turn it into something else is, is really a curious thing. And that would be a concern for me for talent. And we're starting to see a couple of things that, you know, that hopefully will not divide you, but that will lead you walking in the same direction. So I thank you again, Ms. Webb, for putting together the math presentation. You will have a science one coming up. There will be an ELA one coming up. And others as we go along, as well as a tour of the Birch Grove Modular's and other things that are all on the horizon. So, you know, I don't know what else we can say about that. I'm surprised that it's been turned into some I mean, is that the kind of thing, if you are to be re-elected, would you not want to see this kind of thing?
Oh, no, I love it. I would have loved to have seen it two years ago.
I'm a garden supervisor.
Well, we do, yeah, I mean
She had just been hired, so.
Oh, yeah, after fighting to get them back. And, you know, that was, that was the thing. Can you imagine what we would be losing if we did not have her? And we didn't have her. We didn't have that position. Similarly, we're missing right now the director's stuff because we don't have that position. We have struggled the last couple of years with a number of things that we're trying to regain our stabilization of. And that has been what we've talked about frequently. And there were positions that we had slotted to go, one of them to go to the high school to provide that. And as you know, it was quite a fight before it was eliminated. So, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely moving in a direction. We're trying to get there and we're fighting tooth and nail to try to make that stuff happen in every way. And I think they're doing a great job and I think you as a board are doing a great job too. Collectively, all of you, every single one of you. So, you know, I, that's what I would hope we'd be highlighting.
Who was still a great highlight?
I was. I'm very glad we did this. I mean, at some point, I'm glad it happened. And there's even current data not in the school year, so I, I don't understand. Everybody thinks that there's always an ulterior motive to everything we do and it really is just the timing of things and how it happens. And I don't know why we can't accept that that's the case. I guess we could have waited for a month, a month or a week, but
No, again, let's clarify. I don't think, I don't think everybody's.
No, no, but
But I think that there's something going on with certain
Just having, having multiple people in the room accuse us of having these motives that are not genuine, it's frustrating me that this is where we're at right now.
But it does remind me that it's important for folks to know what they don't know. And I just want to say it again, we don't meet outside of this room, you know, other than committee meetings. This is where it happens, you know, we don't, there's, there's nothing we're talking about as a group other than around this table. So, you know, what you see is what you get.
And that's why I'm even so loud.
You, you just keep an eye on the clock. Are we, I, I apologize, I popped up and I came back. Are we at G four?
You're at three, G three.
Oh, we're at
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah.
So give me a second to So what we tried to do at, usually the second meeting of the month for each, for each month is to identify people that, people or physicians, individuals that we wanted to give some kudos to and to give some acknowledgements to. So this month, I'm interested in throwing out there and just giving some kudos to Tanya McDermott and Mike Rattleback, who are awesome, awesome phys ed teachers at Talon Middle School. They have won the Outstanding New Professional and Performance Lab Recognition Award. They had put in some information, they were doing some data on some new ways to do physical education, acquired some equipment, some grants, and they won the Outstanding Performance Lab Recognition Award for that. So I just wanted to give them some kudos, highlights, props, whatever they call it.
They showed it off at open house.
Yeah, did they, the force plate?
Yes, yeah, they did. They made somebody jump and like they were talking about the physics and all. It was, it was pretty cool. It was pretty impressive.
What is that the board come from?
It's one of the consortiums for new science and phys ed and grants that they've got. Amazing. They raised money for it through some of those, some of those dodgeball tournaments and other things. We're also helping to raise money for the force plates and it really helps. It's in, so you know, it's another example of how working hard and try to provide a lot of ways to bring all kinds of things into the school. So I also wanted to thank Abby Kazman-Harnett. She helped get the Farm School Week thing identified and recognized in Talon. Brought a lot of the state legislative legislators here and it was a fantastic event, the Birch Grove Modular's. Got a chance to use that building for something other than just sort of tours and, you know, other stuff. So it was part of being part of the Farm School Initiative, so she did an amazing job. Peter Staba did an amazing job getting buildings off to a new start. And Mr. Keith has been doing a wonderful job and being very flexible with physical education in the, in the modulars as well. So these are just some highlights and props I wanted to throw out there, recognitions for, for October of this year. And I'll bring you more in the second meeting next month.
Thank you.
So we're now moving on to what is now the new order, G four. Grab this.
The date changed, right?
G four in the new agenda, so I just have to cycle it up a little bit. Okay. G six, that's been a
Yeah.
It's the old G six.
The old G six, way back in the days of two hours ago.
You can start flapping while you're loading it up. So It's okay. The current Board of Education, now it expires on November thirteenth. Due to the potential need for action by the current board, moving this meeting to November sixth will allow for the completion of tasks by the current Board of Education Negotiation Committee will be part of the negotiations. The current board is in force until about the twelfth, as far as I understand it. Also, the Birch Grove Building Project will still need some action, as I was mentioning before. These things are kind of fluid, so from the standpoint of talking to them, they really need to have some action done in November. And at November twenty-seventh, being known as precariously close to the Thanksgiving holiday. So for a couple of reasons, people had asked about that. The November thirteenth meeting, keeping it, so having November sixth and then having a November thirteenth meeting. Keeping that one would allow for more flexibility with respect to the holiday and also would allow for related business to occur. Should we have to do the SCG oh four two, you know, form at that time? Or do the, there's a couple of different things that they were throwing out there. Concrete site, structure, and concrete submission, submission plan might be necessary during that time. So it's important to have the two meetings in November because there's a lot of business that will probably be popping up in that time. We do need to keep mindful of getting that Birch Grove stuff in, but, but that's basically it. In reference to the questions that were asked before, I'm not sure what the concern is in that the town council has the final approval and until the Board of Ed actually ratifies this, the person that was part of the committee can't talk about it with the council. So the sooner that it gets ratified, the, the person can actually start talking about it. Which means they could start talking about it tonight or tomorrow if it gets ratified for the board. So I, I'm not, I'm not sure I can understand the concern related to it, but right now, that's what's being requested is to get the November sixth meeting in there and then to keep the November thirteenth meeting. And those two meetings would be the two meetings in November. Would also possibly help you avoid a special meeting should something come up. So these are in front of the board for your consideration. Should you decide to do that, you know, the movement would be moving into action. But this time you will move G four to action. We have to cycle some of this stuff around.
Um, can I ask? Actually, I don't know, Michelle, you need some journal paper. Clarify. Well, Katie Murray gave an update last night at the council meeting.
Our meeting was canceled.
Which led to more confusion.
Yeah.
Because the Birch Grove meeting had to be canceled, it kind of put everybody into a
It was on the, on the
Where is this gonna be?
On the schedule that we had, this meeting was supposed to have the decision or a board, we were gonna have to vote on something, approve something for the Birch Grove project. On my schedule that I had, since our meeting was canceled, I think it's since been updated. So I was like, oh, I mean, you this, but, so it's been delayed. But it may be November sixth, it has to be done by November sixth so that the building committee can get it to the next meeting. So it, that's really
What I got, what I got from Katie last night, which sounded important is that this is a very strict schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're, they're talking about when they give the keys to the school district to open the doors, basically. And walking back from that.
Yeah.
And it's really important to stay on schedule.
Yes, and I
Basically, I had more than I was there.
I mean, it may, it may or may not, it may or may not have the thing available by November sixth. They, they will have to probably have it done by the thirteenth. And that is, I think, what they'd be aiming at because they have action that they have to take prior to the Thanksgiving.
So I guess what I'm saying is getting things signed and, and doing this when it needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's just trying to line up the logistics of it.
Yeah, I don't know what the new dates is, but I know that, you know, we have to, you know, building on something. And, you know, it was supposed to be tonight, but now it's been moved. I can't imagine, I think we're gonna have more than a couple of weeks to be able to accomplish this. And then, because after we get it, it goes to the building committee and then, you know, goes to the state. And then, you know, if we don't do it, when we need to do it, we'll have to hold a special meeting or whatever and
Or whatever, or delays and you know that.
What's wrong with having a special meeting?
Well, then it's
Trying to get y'all to get a special meeting is, is hard.
We can have a special meeting on November sixth.
That's what
And you don't have to play around with the dates for the new order day. I mean, that's what I think Bill was talking about.
But why, why, why wouldn't we though? I mean, you had a negotiation team who did this and the town council, if the town council approves this or doesn't on their own, so why would, why would you not?
November sixth would be this board event, right here.
So this, we'd have one more meeting as a group.
Yeah, it's you guys.
We're not gonna be, whoever's re-elected is not gonna be on the order the following week.
All right, so the emergency here though seems to be Birch Grove. The teachers' contracts don't start until July.
The teachers' contracts, no. The teachers' contracts, if you look back to how we did it three years ago, we went into executive session, we discussed the contracts, we voted on it that night. So I don't even think that we will need to talk about the teachers at our next meeting. I think it'll just be for Birch Grove.
This is more, this is just for Birch Grove to stay on the timeline.
Because we can, we can, we can accomplish what we need to with the contracts tonight. If we, if we follow precedent, which has been just to do it in executive session.
It just gives you flexibility because you not know what's coming.
So at eleven o'clock tonight, we're gonna get a contract that we're expected to, well, yes.
The frustration
That's the frustration, that's the perception problem.
The frustration is we spend so much time being defensive. I don't even think we should be talking about this.
Okay.
I don't understand why we're talking about this, other than, other than we get put in defensive mode and then we get bogged down and we spend a half hour defending ourselves. We've done it over and over again. We've done it about last part of spending, we've done it about inconferences, we've done it about, the list goes on. There's a dozen things that we've had to defend ourselves and, and a lot of it's just because folks, I don't know, I don't even know why, but we fall into the trap and we defend ourselves. And that's why we're, that's why it's nine o'clock or nine fifty, nine one, turn around. And that's why it's gonna be eleven o'clock for them, not because of any other reasons.
Just confirm, town council has final say on the contract, right? And what would be your guess of when they would have their final review of this and kind of get it out the door? I mean, what would be the normal turnaround time? Could they wait till December or January or March?
We would, we would, well, I don't know.
We, we are required, we're required to finish the process of student dates.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a certain date.
Off the top of your head.
Here's, here's
No, she was the decision.
Here's where I'm going with, here's where I'm going with this. And I just wrote down some quick notes here. Basically, Dr. Willett and our attorneys
Negotiation committee.
Are, are experts. And then they work with the negotiation committee. And when it's done, they come up with the recommendation. And then we either approve it or not as a group and then it is sent to the town council to approve it. Or not. Or not, that's right. And the question I would say right now, Christine, maybe this is, I'll direct this to you just to think about this. Who's more knowledgeable at this point? Not, not, not any else other than who's been involved with this from day one, been in negotiations. It would strike me that you'd want the people who are, quote unquote, the closest we have to experts right now because they've been involved with, because otherwise, if you wait to the first meeting and we're running out of time, now you have brand new people, which are, which by the way, are the same brand new people that are gonna have to deal with the contract, I mean, with the, with the budget and you're gonna have to vote very soon on a budget that's gonna go out the door. And they're brand new and, and everybody here knows, by the time you come to your first budget vote to send out the door, you're really not qualified to be making that decision because we're all trying to learn it. So to dump this on the, on the, at the feet of brand new people and say, here, you gotta figure this out. We're not doing them or this community any favors. That would really be totally unfair to say, here, it's your problem, you gotta deal with it. Because it's, it's our problem. We're the ones who's working it. We're the ones who volunteered for this job. It's our responsibility to see this all the way through. Now, I see your concern of, what if the new people don't want? Well, they can get together with the town council and town council will ultimately have the ability to say, no. Having said that, town council's gotta be careful of what they wish for. Because if they, and I've seen in the past, they say, I'm just not gonna accept this. Okay, so who's gonna pay for the arbitration expenses? Who's gonna pay for all the lawyers and all the people to come? And it's kind of like, I'd rather cut off my nose to spite my face. I'd rather stand on my ground and pay the extra money than to help pay for people that are the crocs of what runs our school system here, who by any measure don't get compensated as well as most other communities around you. So if you want to dump it, if you want to dump it at the foot of, and I, I see one, two, three of you here right now, God bless you if you get stuck with this because you are gonna be in over your head and you're gonna say like, I have no clue what's going on. That's what happens.
And it's not that I
I don't think it has to be opposition. I mean, you've got a negotiations committee that went through the whole process.
But what happened to our second read?
You were talking
You know, we always do a second read.
You have an opportunity to talk about this.
I mean, this is essentially tying, this is, okay, I want this in a minute or so. All right, this is not about me opposing the teachers' contracts. I, I, I want them to get their reasons. I want them to be supported. What this comes down to is that I'm being forced into a position to essentially rubber stamp. I can't sit there and read. Nope, I'm talking. Please, just let me finish, all right? Essentially, we're getting put into a situation where I can vote on this right now, right now. I mean, I don't know how long, and then you're essentially tying the hands of the next council, the next board event into whatever those contractual agreements are. Already negotiated it.
Ms. Board, you, you actually have
It's a ratified venue.
All right, so when was it ratified, done, done? When, I, I want the dates. I want, I want the date of when it was ratified and the date that
Pulling on.
Hold on, we could find it. But, but if you want to just But hey, if you wanna, just, you know, we have emails that show that the, the last, the document in its form wasn't finalized until like, what day? So even, even when you're ratified, we're gonna get all the charts and all the tables and all of that stuff. You know, I, I think that it's concerning to you, but this is up and it's on up here right now. You don't have to do anything. It makes sense to have your negotiations committee be the one that stays and is the one that talks about it with the board, whether you do it now and continue it to November sixth or whatever. But you, if you go to November thirteenth, you now lose your entire negotiations committee as a part of the board. It doesn't make any sense to do that right now. The town council has the ability to reject it if they want. They can't talk about it with the town council member until it's ratified by the board. So if you wanna get the town council talking about it before their new people come on, then ratifying it sooner helps. If it doesn't matter, ratifying it later, the same person will hopefully still be part of the town council and can talk about it. They can even talk about it until it gets ratified. A group of lawyers and professional people bargains to get the best deal that they could for Tom. And that's what we presented to you tonight. Typically, strategy and negotiations are presented in the executive session. So if we're gonna be talking about it tonight, it really should be in executive session. Cause you're not supposed to talk about those things until they're ratified outside of executive session. So, you know, these are all typical occurrences. This is all typical, you know, regular practice for these kinds of things. And at the end of the day, the town council can do whatever it wants to do with it at its discretion. I am fearful for the way this is, you know, slowing down or being portrayed because, look. You, it, it's just gonna create ridiculous divisiveness in a town that does not need it. There's absolutely nothing here to be divided about. You can't accept or reject this, the town council can accept or reject this. My personal professional opinion is, you reject it and you might find yourselves in arbitration with a deal that's less favorable to you because there was a lot of energy and time that went into it. And in all fairness, I think that the town council member who is part of that group, who is there, can talk to that. So, you know, whether ultimately someone wants to send a message or not, uh, in arbitration, we will definitely have our message received back to us. And some of that message may not be what you, you know, what you wanna see. So this is laid out before you to do with as you please. We have worked very hard to get it to where it is. November sixth does nothing to you except keep your current negotiations team can be capable of talking to you about it in the session of the Board of Ed. Um, and the November thirteenth meeting allows us to be able to cover the Birch Grove piece. So, I
Now, as Chair of the negotiations committee, we worked extremely hard to come up with this contract that we're gonna present to you tonight. We spent a lot of time talking, going back and forth in mediation for hours on Friday night. And that, that's what we do, that's our job, that's what we're on the committee for. And if you didn't want to agree with our contract that we're bringing to you, then you could have volunteered for the committee. Because it's a lot of frickin' time and this is the best contract that we could bring back to our board and for our community.
And I don't have time to read it.
And you're not gonna have to change it. If you don't like this
That's what the committee work is for, Christine. That's what we're trying to explain to you. We're all surrogates for
No, no, see, no, you don't wanna listen to the story.
Okay, we spent fifteen minutes talking about whether to have a meeting on November sixth and what to do with these contracts. And so now we're not gonna see these contracts until ten o'clock. And we're gonna have to have a disparity.
As I said, the TDA, the TDA ratified it, um, scheduled the ratification vote for October tenth. And I believe they ratified it October tenth. Um, please note that Joe Plummer scheduled ratification, reading this book, I've ratified, signed, town council. I'm just reading that. Yeah, it would be helpful to, uh, yeah, so basically, the timeline is just trying to line up to help you all be able to complete the process by Thanksgiving. Um, they ratified it October tenth, but I have emails up to like a day or two ago. Or they're still going back and forth on some of the, some of the charts and things that they had to have in there so that we can put it on the board.
We haven't
This was our first opportunity to get it out there because we couldn't get it the same date of ratification. The next possible meeting to get it in front of the board was October twenty third, which happens to be where we are. So
And our last previous meeting was at eight thirty, right?
So once again, it's just, you know
We went to pedics, they were just trying to find a way to have
Right.
So we can't, we're not turning around.
So what's the deadline for arbitration?
I think if it gets rejected by the town council, then it goes back into that process. Um, and I, I don't know exactly when it ends, I would have to check if it where it
And that's not, we, what you, what we need to worry about right now is if we're gonna approve this contract or not approve this contract. What happens after that? It, it's really, that's not for us to decide. It goes to the town council or it doesn't.
Confirm, will you confirm after the election, we may possibly not have one negotiating member still here? Is that true?
Yep.
Yeah.
Then, then basically, there's nobody to present this contract to work on.
Yep, right.
There would be nobody here to, for lack of a better word, to championship, champion. This is what we got, this is the best.
And we were the ones in the group negotiating.
And again, it would be, so I, you know, if, so if we don't, and since the town council ultimately has the ability to say, do this. And certainly, the new members will be talking with their, I mean, I hope the new members will be talking to the town, town council. And if they don't like it, then they'll, they'll, they'll vote it down if they don't like it. But to lose all the members who have supported this and done all the homework, that's like putting together a thesis and then the person who wrote it all doesn't show up and they just hand it to somebody else. And say, could, do, do me a favor, could you do this presentation? Tell them why this is, why I did my thesis and everything about it. We can't just dump it on, on the new people, that, that would just be unprofessional. Even though this is a volunteer job, that would be unprofessional to do that.
I think it sends a bad message to our teachers and administrators.
Town council can always say no.
We could say no.
Yeah, we could say no. The town council has the time to look at and say no.
Your vote will be reflected. If what you hear about you don't like, you can say no, you know, in the You cannot change it.
We can't, that's the thing, we can't change the contract. This is what was negotiated and ratified by the union. This is what's presented to you, you take it, you leave it.
It's, it's, you're either taking it or you're not. You know, that's where
And if we, if we decide not to accept it, it's under the
But just, so Christina, what are you proposing? That a new board come in because they would make a different decision than this board? And you don't wanna lock their hands, is that, is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, I just feel it, it's just very rushed. I mean, we're expected to vote on it tonight and
We don't have to.
But this is the process, this is the process.
If we're not I put the, one of the reasons why if I moved it to November sixth is to see that the possibility is to set up a negotiation team if we needed it.
And then it's also, we can't, if, if we don't approve this contract tonight, then we will all have access to it. But we can't publicize it or share it, it's confidential. And so then we have all of us around this table having access to this document for, for two weeks. You know, and that's, I think, why we don't generally do that. We generally get it, review it, and you accept it or you don't accept it. It's, you can read the other, I think, the other contracts on the website. So you could have read it and this is gonna show you all the changes in it. And there's, it's not a hundred different changes, although it's not like
I mean, I think we're ahead of ourselves. If we actually have the contract in front of us and we're like, yeah, in executive session, we feel like there's something that the next board should really be responsible for. I think it would give us to then not decide tonight and say, look, the next board should really be dealing with this, regardless of what it is. You know, and I, and I think really what we're talking about is, is there wrongdoing here? And I think we've talked about this enough. I mean, we were accused of wrongdoing, so we've talked about it enough. So I don't think any reasonable mind would say, yeah, there's some wrongdoing here. Well, and the other thing is, you can't, you can't, you can't change it and the public cannot see it until you ratify it. So if people wanted to have a problem with it and then inform the town council, they had a problem, like, this would be an earlier opportunity to do that.
And, and so, can I make a motion? And we're not, this isn't ending the conversation because there's discussion, we haven't, we haven't even made the motion yet. So I wanna make a motion to move in November thirteenth Board of Ed meetings, November sixth at seven thirty P M. And move action, I'm sorry, move item G four to action item J one.
Wait.
So we're gonna move
I just wrote a motion.
I don't think we should move any meetings. I think we should have a special meeting on the sixth.
Well, you can say that, but there's a motion on the board.
Well, what you can do, you could also just, this was
We need to move it, just to move it down.
Yeah, but I would, I would strike it and just motion to have a board meet, you know, to cancel the meeting on the twenty seventh and have a meeting on November sixth. That's what Because this was, this was a couple of iterations and so that motion probably takes you back a little.
Aren't we just moving this to action?
We are just
You're moving, yeah, you're gonna move to action, but your motion would be to, to have a board meeting on November sixth. And then to cancel your meeting on the twenty seventh. And that way, you've got one on November sixth, November thirteenth, so You'd be moving that to J one.
Moving to action, yes.
J one.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
The executive.
A second.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? Any objections? Motion carries.
Oh, G seven, there's no
I'm a hard guy. Precious time. Take care of yourself and I hope I see you.
Fisher, thank, it's been a pleasure working with you, it really has. You've added so much to our
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a hundred too, but I know you have precious time.
So we're moving into G five, which is the Board of Ed also increased.
Right, so G five, viewing goal setting, pre discussion. This is just to prime you. To prime you that around this time of year, the Board of Ed starts to, to develop its goals. And that you've been invited to the, to the mission vision process. Um, the second part of that is happening November twenty fifth. And then from there, you know, Center for School Change will be working with us well to create that portrait of graduate, which also you could be a part of. So, right now, I just wanted to bring to your attention and remind you that the board goals were developed around the lap, you know, around this time. And you possibly wanna start thinking about it or, um, you know, set up a session maybe just for goal setting for the board as you have done in the past. So it's just a reminder, as you get the new board in, we'll be looking to do the goal setting process for the board. But put it on your radar so that it's not forgotten as we move through the, uh, busy, busy, the next couple of weeks.
So noted.
That was gonna be the last thing, just a reminder, you know.
That's a free thing for the other thing. So actually, I'll ask for a motion, please, so we're gonna go faster than that? Let's go do it now.
No, editing time on November
Oh, really?
That is a good move. Thank you, John Colombo, she's getting the job right now.
She's getting good, she's, she's always been good at the
Yes, she does. So so the, the five, well, we have to go through the rest of the cases, right?
So you already finished up G four now, and then G five, which G four was the possible date changed, G five was the goal setting.
Yep.
Now you're going to move to G six and G seven, but
Those have to be checked.
If you're going to talk to them about strategy or anything else which you probably wanna do, you're gonna wanna go into executive session to do that. Then you would come out of executive session and make a decision about what you did. Whether you moved G six and G seven to J two and J three for action or not. So, because if you're gonna talk about any part of the negotiations and the strategies and all that, that's where it is, you need to do that. So you have to decide whether you wanna go into executive session for that or what you wanna do exactly, but
We need to go into executive session to talk about contracts, quick.
And so we need to make a motion to
Uh, make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation and contracts.
Wait, are we doing that now?
What, what? We should finish the meeting.
We finished the meeting, let's put it on the
Yes.
I thought you said we had to do it
Well, you probably, you wanna add it to the agenda. Make a motion, yes. And then the thing about it is, if you're going to be talking, this is the part that's tricky, right? If you're gonna be talking about the negotiation strategy and all that, you wanna go into executive session. You add it to the agenda and go into it now. To talk about it, when you came out, you would make your decisions about G six and G seven.
No, we, I disagree. I disagree. We should be able to knock off this whole thing, add what you said. You should, should be able to add it on, knock everything off so we can let all these people get out of here. And then come back, come back in and finish up the item. We don't, we're not locked into this, there is some flexibility.
So you want to add the, you wanna move item G six and G seven to after the executive session.
Two views.
So you're gonna add the executive session.
Yes, that's exactly, just like we come out, we do any voting.
Add the executive session.
We already added the second session.
Do you do a motion and you do the second?
We add a motion, yeah.
Yes.
I don't know if you
Can you go, can you go back to forty nine pages and tell We need a second.
I think I tried to.
Second and end.
We need a second, it's a discussion, you have to vote to add the executive session.
So I'm making a motion to add it in executive session to the agenda. For the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies and contracts.
Second. So you're rescinding your previous
Rescinding my previous, yes.
Great.
Motion.
At least I think they're trying to make my last night very difficult.
We are.
I'm with you.
I'm sorry.
No, you're great.
We all threw it up, we should just start now.
I know, I'm like my mom there.
You're doing a great job.
Alright, so where, where are we at that? We're at, we're at second, any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Motion carries.
Carrie, what item is your executive session? I don't know.
The executive session should probably be item M. Right? And then your, your next one, N, will be TDA contracts. And then O is going to be task contract. P is future, Q is new business. And R is adjournment. Does that make sense? So trying to get you all Right, so, you go through the rest of it and then you have M's executive.
Alright, so up to the committee reports, right?
Yes. I have nothing.
I have nothing. Oh, wait, we are, uh, we are negotiating versus right now. Do you have persons who want? I said it earlier, there's more people here.
Well done.
Ah, thank you. Alright, board action, we had the one item, correct?
We need to change it.
Got motion up here, I wonder what.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but I would go with, because of the
Oh, you didn't, that was the last motion.
Yeah, so I would say if you wanna do that, motion, motion to hold a Board of Ed meeting November sixth and to cancel the Board of Ed meeting November twenty seventh. That way, we'll set up a meeting for you November sixth, so have one on November sixth, November thirteenth, if you can't sign on twenty seventh. So you have make a motion to do that.
They didn't start ready J one, right?
Oh. It's J, you're, you're at action, right?
For the date change.
Yeah, so, so move
Second.
Saying, no, it's
My second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? Motion carries. Hold up participation.
So, Mike, moving back here.
Hi, Giga.
What's going?
Good, how are you?
Uh, Giga Mari, thirty two, Superdrive. Um, so I'll thank you all for your service. I know, gotten to know a lot of you, um, and I know you guys do a lot for our town and I appreciate it. However, I just wanted to say that I do urge the Board of Ed to refrain from voting on these contracts until after the election. Um, I don't want to accuse anyone of that fate. I don't want to accuse anyone of that faith, and I've heard a lot of good points about this, and I get the arguments that you put forward. However, I feel like, given how consequential these actions are, it's really important that the new board has a chance to opine on them. I understand that the town council does have the final decision up on that, but then, you know, we still do have a role up on that, and then you have to go and negotiate with them to get them to reject that if you were against that contract. So, I guess my point is, is that, you know, as a candidate, and potentially a member of this board, come November, I understand that this is a big job, and we, we're gonna have a busy month in November, regardless of what happens with this contract, but we're ready for the challenge, and I, I really do feel that because this action is so consequential, they really should have a voice in it, so, thank you.
Uh, Liz Cash, the 54th panel, first of all, I just want to say again, thank you for having Jen. Um, I got the opportunity to go to the most, the best run, uh, uh.
Budget workshop?
Last week.
Budget workshop.
Thank you, budget workshop, I was gonna say, great. And you got a few minutes to talk to her, and I really wanted to talk to her longer, and Dr. Willett was kicking her out the door. And I'm a math geek, and I come from a family of math geeks, and I was so impressed with that, so, so impressed. Love to see the ELA stuff, and love to see the science degree, person do the exact same thing. As far, she must have mentioned math, math data a hundred times, I literally couldn't, uh, count how many times. I wholeheartedly disagree with Mr. Murray, completely disagree. I think Bob brought up an excellent point, I think Sam brought up an excellent point. No one knows their contracts better than Michelle, and the team that goes out to do that, she does an extraordinary job doing it. You guys have, you know what's going on with this, with, with our teachers, with all the different contracts. We need you to vote for this contract, or, you know, or at least look at this contract. We need you to do that. The new board will have so much time, um, to just, or need so much time just to drink from the fire hose and understand what's going on. They absolutely need you to vote for this, thank you, Jen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. The first comment.
Just.
See the microphones?
But can you just name?
Better, mine is carved out, okay, on eighth, Hillcrest Drive. And the first comment, just please, can you see the microphones? Hearing aids, it was hard for me to hear a lot of what you had to say. So as we go into further sessions, I would appreciate, under the ADA and everything else that you abide by that, listen, you, because a few back, back here want to see many me. But anyway, what I want to say about what I'm hearing tonight, I think this board has to make its decision. I'm a candidate, okay, I'd be in the total dark. This board has worked, all of you unanimously to come to where you are today, and not defer this to the town council, it has to be done. You want to approve this contract, it's yours decision, you've done the work, and I would say go ahead. Okay, I'm all for it, and if I happen to be around, you know, another time, you bet, I'm gonna be, you know, pounding on the door. You people did a great job, thanks.
Sir, I hope you get elected, because I'm the one who's always saying, you gotta speak up louder, I can't hear.
Thank you. Military too, I got that.
There you go, thank you.
Kate Valo, AD Tom Green. I just wanted to offer, share some historical perspective from somebody that's gone back and forth from being, you know, like a quiet observer to more active participant for quite a while now with these Board of Ed meetings as well as town council meetings. I've had the benefit, thank you for the acknowledgement, Bob, I will say as well. I've had the benefit of really observing the processes that the boards go through, it's complicated, and I really recognize that. I just wanted to offer an observation that from my perspective, it's really common practice to try to finish the work of one board before turning over to the new board. I hope that kind of politics doesn't disrupt that, it feels a little like that might be what's happening, and that this work remains professional, continues the work that's been done so far and moves on. I've also had the benefit of seeing super lot of presentations, I don't like super lot, Lisa, I'm not speaking. It's like some late hour. It's been a very long day. But I've had the pleasure of seeing a lot of people present over years, I'll say now. Like Jen Webster did tonight with math, we've seen presentations about what's happening with our social, emotional growth and development within the district, mental health, as well as science, so let's keep going on. And I just wanted to say, I'm really, I feel really appreciative of that, and it was exciting for me to share your excitement, Sam, to see you come back tonight, because it's been a while, I think that between Birch Grove and a lot of other budgetary concerns that have been in the district, you know, the boards really had to put it in a radical mode. So it's great to have the reassurance that with Birch Grove moving along and everything, I don't want to get mad at the work. That's really important. And I just wanted to highlight one, oh, two more things, I wanted to highlight one thing that Jen Webster said. I want to say it, right? She brought up notice and wonder facts. What did you notice and what did you wonder? I just really wanted to highlight how important that is to me as an educator and with my background in education, to hear a leader in our district really talking about that, because that's meaningful for kids at the youngest age, all the way up to the oldest age, preparing for those unknowns as they move forward, I think that's exciting. And then, I don't want to be remiss and just say, words cannot express my thanks and gratitude to all of you for moving on. Yes, anymore?
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Megan. All right, ready to move on to points of information?
I have.
Have a second.
What's that?
I have a second.
You have a second?
No, I was second to you.
Oh, you have a second one, after me? I'm used.
You're gonna really talk into it.
All right, so my point of information that I would like to just put on our agenda, or perhaps the next time, is to change the name of Columbia State Indigenous Peoples' Day, that's what I would like to do. I don't know quite how to do it, and I'd like to learn how to do it, but I'd like it to be on the agenda for the next time. Future agenda, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up, I, future gen item would be great. Are we still in contact?
Uh huh, yes.
Yes.
Technically, yes.
Oh, I see.
No, I'm not.
No, it's a point of information, but yes.
Okay.
Oh, so like, was that the same?
No, I was not, I was just gonna make a, I found some information. I can't. So I was, I, well, whatever you want to do. She was a board, I'm not adding more.
I just wanted to recap what I said earlier about this contract. We are the experts, we're the ones that put the package together, and when this is us to hand it off to the new people, we're gonna be overwhelmed by this. And Jacob, I, I heard what you said, and I appreciate it. It reminds me of being the old lieutenant in the Air Force and have somebody say to me, I appreciate your youthful enthusiasm, but it's gonna get you in trouble. Don't lose that, ask the structure, tough questions when you're sitting up here, but you're about to take on something that, you know, you've been in college, you know how hard it is, and I appreciate you, you're a well-educated person, but you're not gonna get a fire hose, you're gonna get a double fire hose, you're gonna be overwhelmed, and remember, there's nine of you, not just you, if you are at the ability to do it, that doesn't mean the other eight people do. And once again, the town council and the board should really discuss this, and if y'all get on the same sheet of music, just reject it and start all over again, but there'll be nobody to champion the contract at all, because nobody will be an expert. You can't expect this gentleman to do it when the others three are gone.
You're awfully pessimistic there.
I don't want to get into that. Thank you, I'm not, I'm not trying to ride you, I'm just trying to give you a little tidbit of advice before I walk out the door to the sunset.
Younger Bob.
So we've already got over the timeline and why we're getting these contracts tonight. It's just, it was ratified, this is our next meeting, we're getting on. The consequence, when we negotiate, we are privy to a lot of information. There's a big black book about Tallent and our surrounding districts, and then you can compare with. And so, like, all of that is brought into consideration, and we have to consider the contract and the information that's provided to us, and where we stand, and we have to take into account arbitration, and, you know, we're privy to information about arbitration, for our mediator and our lawyers. And so, the consequences of us delaying this, and not, and it not being passed is arbitration, which is gonna cost the district probably seventy-five thousand dollars just to arbitrate it. And then, Tallent is probably not in a position to win arbitration, so we will end up losing more in salaries. It'll cost us more all around to not look at this contract with the people who are here, who are in the room negotiating it. So that's, that's the consequence of not doing this time, and I just want that to be clear, because I'm a little bit offended that being the chair of this committee who put these contracts together, that I am just having, there's so many people, or not so many, there's a few people in the room who are just saying, forget it, we'll deal with it for the next one, next term? And it's, it's here, I'm here, Karen's here, we were in the room, we need to do this now. And there are consequences to not doing it now.
If you go to arbitration, am I right in thinking, everything is now on the table?
Everything's on the table.
Do not, do not just have a word to lie to, miss everybody in Greece. Yes.
Yes, that's going to target, yeah, so.
And we've seen where the numbers are, you know, because it starts from the beginning, from the first proposal, and, you know. I, I would just add to what Cheryl said, serving on, this is the second round of contracts, I've served on this negotiating committee. Kathy Borowski was chair the first time, who do you want?
I'm just.
And Cheryl's on it also, so, it's a lot of work, and in my opinion, it would be irresponsible to delay it at this point, and a big, huge risk to the district and this community to incur any more cost. And I'd also say, I think it's disrespectful to the process, and to our teachers and administrators to put in the time to work on these contracts as well, on their own committees, so. It, it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of hours, and the purpose of us as board members doing the work on the committees that we serve is to serve the board, no different than Sam, Christine, and Jeff on finance and facilities. When you guys are in that committee, we trust that you are doing work on behalf of the board. So, that is the process.
You know, there, there's a pattern that I just assume, I can talk about, but I'll say, I mean, there's, there's the work in the board, and there's what we do here, and then there's some perception that gets created, that it's a life of its own. And it's been happening over and over here for the past few years, and that perception that it's a life of its own gets talked about, and you know, I, I thankfully don't read what happens on social media, but I hear a little bit of it, and it's something that the next board is really gonna have to work hard on, and I would hope the next council works hard on, because there's something going on here that's just not healthy for Tallent, you know, and it's not boding well, and it's it's something we're really gonna have to work at, you guys are gonna have to work. I guess my commitment to you, Dr. Willett, is, you know, I plan to sit out here and go up to that mic and call folks on this kind of stuff that could continue to happen, because it's just really, it's, it's just really a detriment to our good process, and to getting things done for the good of the town. So, you know, I think maybe it's politics, maybe it's a misunderstanding of the roles of elected officials and what they do, and maybe it's a misunderstanding of, of committee work and how that works, I, I don't know, but, um, I think, I think the next council and the next board really have their work cut out for them to do some repair of, of how we function well, you know, and I think we've talked about it a number of times, we've said, look, we don't feel like we have a voice, you know, what, I, I remember some, one of us saying, you know, then what's the role of the Board of Ed if we don't have a voice in this decision-making, you know, and so, I, I, I think there's some repair work to be done, and I'm mostly like getting up and going home, it's that close to being done, but.
I just want to say too, if it's a political thing, I remember I was stepping down, we have nothing to gain from it, you know?
I, I have no desire, I mean, I don't have any great need to come back here for another meeting, it was just, you know, let's just do what needs to be done.
There was a poll. Okay. All right, so, are we ready? Motion to go into executive session. I need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, strategies, and contracts. I need my mic, so we're gonna.
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.